I want to give everybody an update on Commissioner Chairman Dean is not going to be with us today. He had a procedure at the hospital and he is there now. So if you would, let's try to make sure we keep Chairman Dean in our thoughts and prayers as he recovers. But I'm open to meeting with a prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day. Lord, we just thank you for so many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We realize those all come from you. Lord, I'm going to lift up Chairman Dean this morning. Just ask for a quick recovery and get him back to 100% and just be with the doctors and nurses as they tend to him and watch over his family as they try to help Elton recover. Lord, just going to ask you to be with this commission this morning to help us make decisions going to be in the best interest of our entire county. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Okay Florence.
Good morning. First thing we'll do is go over our visitors for the day. First, we'll hear from City County Emergency Management Agency. Next, from County Engineer George Speak, Director of Elections Darrell Parker, Chief Probation Officer Ray Williams, and Senior IT Manager Rodney Smith. Let's hear from Kristi.
Good morning. So we're going to start out with kind of comparing our numbers from last year in the same date and time from November 1st to, I'm sorry, from December 1st till now. We're looking at only a .28% increase this year from November 30th to today's date. Where last year, we had a 4.9% increase of a total of 571 cases last year. So we're, and we're down to only 97 over that same time period. So we're starting to see a significant drop as far as our total increase that we're seeing. Our vaccination numbers are total vaccinated are 92,390 or 40.79% of our population. 117,313 or 51.8 have received at least one dose. In totaling, we have distributed in Montgomery County 222,990 doses of the COVID vaccine. We have not seen or heard Omicron in Montgomery yet. The state health officer actually said it hasn't been seen in Alabama as of yesterday. So that's some good numbers. We're just hoping everybody continues their efforts, especially throughout the holiday season. Be with your families as much as you can. Just kind of be thought provoking when you're keeping clean, sanitizing, and maybe not being all in everyone's face, trying to maintain a little bit of space and distance. We are looking at our temperatures over the last four weeks. Montgomery Emergency Management has worked with community development and taken what used to be the Temporary Crisis Center or the COVID Crisis Center from 2020. And it's now the Montgomery Crisis Center, meaning Warming Center, Tornado Center, or even a center for us to house people during hurricane evacuations during the summer. We have built out a full-fledged kitchen inside the facility. There's a day room, so people will not be in just an open space gymnasium, which isn't even good during a type of tornadic event. We have rooms that they can go into, actually have some privacy. Each one of the rooms have television, so they can watch some of their local programming as well as maintaining information as far as the weather. We are monitoring the weather and trying to make our final determinations on what's our standard for opening. We, last year went with 32 degrees for four hours overnight. And when you start actually thinking about wind chill and things like that, we're trying to find that perfect number. I know we've had several people in our community that have, you know, voiced their opinions and thought we didn't do enough last year. But we are augmenting what the Salvation Army and Friendship Mission and local community centers do to try to help with that. So I hope people understand that. I have a staff of me and three. We will be having one person join us in January. She had to give a 30-day notice, but she'll be joining our team next month. But to be able to house people, feed them, give them a safe place without the volunteer efforts is really hard. We have several of our churches that always come to the County Commission and City Council asking for assistance. Well, we ask for that same assistance, not from you guys, but from those community members in those churches that happily take those funds and don't necessarily want to stand up and come when it comes time to actually the hard work. They take a lot of the community efforts. When they do the donations and they pass it out, get all the credit for it. So we're hoping some of those people that only open on Tuesdays and Thursdays for a couple of hours to try to pass out some homeless clothing, will step out of their boundaries and actually come to the Warming Center and help us with the people that do have mental disorders that we don't have a facility for, that we're breaking up fights with. Or people that have no capacity for keeping themselves clean and we're trying to help them make sure they get showers and things like that.
Are you communicating with them, Kristi, these other organizations?
Yes, sir, especially when some of them come in on our Facebook. I've made a special point to communicate back with them. But we're trying our best. We, like I said, we have four people, so showers would be limited at this point in time. Because we do try to provide them with a new fresh set of clothing. And we're also working with some of our community programs for them to come in and meet with them to help with assisting for housing as well as maybe locating some jobs for these individuals.
Kristi, I want to commend you. I know last, I think Christmas Eve and Christmas morning, you spent on Augusta Street at the TRC providing breakfast. I know that morning at 4:30 in the morning. So that was your Christmas Day and your Christmas Eve.
Yes, sir. My staff didn't spend Christmas with our families at all last year. We were with these people. So we were open a total of 47 nights last year. We open at 4 o'clock when we do open. Right now, we're going to stick with 32 degrees. So anytime you see 32 degrees, we'll be open. We're trying to see that perfect number as far as wind chill. If you look at 34 degrees, which will have Sunday night at a 10 mile an hour wind, you're looking at a wind chill of 26.2 degrees. And I think that is something we're trying to take into consideration and make sure that we're open. 39 degrees at a 10 mile an hour wind is still 32 degrees. So we're just trying to make sure, one, we have a job to do and make sure that any emergency, not just Warming Center needs, would be covered. We have other things that we're responsible for. But we're trying to make time and plans for being able to cover this as well.
I think it's only fair that the other organizations that are providing similar services that we support should be, should make themselves available should you need them. You should be able to call on them and they have them respond, respond to that. So if anything that we can help you with in that regard, let us know.
I greatly appreciate it. And Church of the Highlands, they don't have a facility or they can't take in people, but they made sure and made a huge donation of water and food for us to be able to provide meals. Several people came by last week dropping off clothing that we were trying to do just so that we're ready. We don't want to be behind the eight ball. We don't want people saying we're not doing. We've been working on this since October and trying to make sure that we have every I dotted, every T crossed to make sure that they have this. Lowe's donated $5,000 worth of kitchen equipment for, just from a phone call and wanting to know what our project was for us to be able to have a fully functional kitchen. We've had the plumbers, the electricians in to make sure that everything HVAC came in to check the building. So everything that we've done, my staff, like I said, we learned how to pull up carpet and lay linoleum. So it's been a true event and things we've learned how to do. EMA, God only knows what our day, our job description, me and Ms. Florence were just joking about what the job description is. We never know what ours is. It changes daily, so.
Do you need, did I hear you say you'd like to have voluntary mental health professionals?
That would be phenomenal for us to have some of that. Several of the people that we had last year argued amongst themselves. And then when someone would comment on it, that would turn into a physical altercation that, again, we were breaking up. We did ask for sheriff or police just to pop in, just add that visibility. One thing that we're going to do is we do have a waiver for us to search their property just to make sure there's no weapons or illegal drugs inside our facility. Any drugs that are found, the person's not going to be arrested. They're going to be impounded as found drugs. Because we don't want someone seeking shelter from the extreme cold to end up in jail. So we're trying to make sure and make every effort to give them as much of an opportunity to succeed and get out of that rut and not want to create another system problem.
Thank you.
So y'all have a great day.
Thank you, Kristi.
Next, we'll go over the items to be considered during the formal session. First item of new business is a resolution to engage Stiefel and Liberty Bank and Trust Company as underwriters and Gilpin Govan PC as bond counsel regarding a bond issue to fund repairs and renovations to the detention facility and other capital projects.
Florence, Mr. Vice, Jim, man.
Yes, sir.
Do, do, do we have a specific, and I asked this last meeting, I think it's only fair to the taxpayers if we could have a specific dollar amount of that this particular project, these projects entail. So I was hoping that we could at least get a dollar amount in terms of the money that we want to borrow that will actually be on the burden of the tax, be a burden of the taxpayers to pay back over however many years. So still don't have a dollar amount that we're trying to borrow.
We have a dollar, an estimated budget for all of these projects. As we proceed, we'll decide, you know, if any are going to be prioritized. But the current dollar figure for the projected capital projects are somewhere in the neighborhood of $35 million. You all could choose to look at other resources, reserves or something to fund part of this. But we've talked generally in terms of a $30 million bond issue.
Thank you.
Next item is a resolution approving the 2022 severe weather preparedness tax holiday, February 25th through 27th. Consider Montgomery County Parks and Recreation Board member appointment. Consider FY 2022 grant agreement with the Department of Youth Services for housing juveniles at the Montgomery County Youth Detention Facility for Otoga, Butler, Chilton, and Elmore Counties. Consider Amendment Number Two to a contract with Acme Supply Company for inmate uniforms. Consider Amendment Number Two to a contract with diversified companies for off-site printing of notices for the Revenue Commissioner's Office. Consider an amendment to the contract with Horn LLP to extend the term and maximum liability for administration of the ERA program. Consider proposed 2022 legislative agenda item relating to Montgomery County to further provide for the salary of the members of the Montgomery County Commission by converting certain existing expense allowances to salary.
Florence, that was going to be subject to some more research that they're going to do on that one. So what, should we pass this? Wouldn't necessarily be in the form that's, that's attached to this agenda. You understand what I'm saying?
Right, there might be amendments.
Well, we were pretty specific that we wanted this to be a standalone and not be convoluted with other ideas.
Yeah, but you know, they were going to research whether or not it would become the effective date.
Right.
They want to get that language right. And these, the ones we have attached here has the next commission language. So I want to make sure if we pass it, we understand that it's, that's subject to change. Because there was at least one representative that thought we'd be able to do it, make it effective immediately.
Immediately. And this still has the initial language.
It has that language in it.
So it could be approved subject to, could it be approved subject to amendment to clarify the effective date?
Right.
Hold on, I'm looking.
Yeah.
But before we begin to advertise it, we would need to have the exact language.
Exactly.
Can we go ahead and move it forward in the, in the interest of time with the understanding?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, yeah, I would like to do that.
Okay.
Let me just make one note. The next item for consideration is a proposed 2022 legislative agenda item relating to Montgomery County to further provide for a salary increase for the members of the Montgomery County Commission. Consider the FY 2021 Employee Recognition and Appreciation Program budget. Consider the 2022 commission meeting schedule. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Are there any additions?
I do, Florence, I, let me get $5,000. Alabama Dance Theater. Players that sponsor Mrs. Toll this year, and they've already had it, so I'll lay it on that one. $1,000 for the Lacey Boyd Parade. And $500, is Teresa here?
Yes, she's in the back, behind the computer screens.
$500 for the Jamari Terrell Williams Foundation.
That's on, that's on there.
Is that, okay. That's it.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. Consider miscellaneous.
I'm sorry, Florence. $2,000 to the parent teachers liaison at Holland Avenue.
And that was how much again?
$2,000.
Any other additions? Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
I want to do 1,500 to Duchess, Divas, and Gents.
And is that for general operations?
Yes, ma'am.
Consider a bid award to Sharp Cut Lawn Service for Landscape and Irrigation Maintenance at Elton Dean Park. Consider budget change requests numbers two, three, and four for the Engineering Department. Consider budget change request number two for the probate judge's office for elections. Consider budget change request number one for the Revenue Commissioner's Office. Consider budget change request number one for the youth facility detention. Consider a position fill request for community corrections for a community corrections technician. Consider position fill request for a customer service clerk for the County Commission. Consider position fill request for the detention facility for corrections officer, trainee, and corporal. Consider a position fill request for information systems for an IT specialist systems. Consider position fill request for the Sheriff's Office for a deputy sheriff, trainee, and a public safety communications dispatcher. Consider position fill request for the youth detention facility for three juvenile detention officers. Consider travel training request for appraisal, finance, the district attorney, and probate.
Florence, I apologize, but I want a little clarity on number 10. Is that, is that for the next term for the county commissioners or for this term immediately?
Which one is that?
Number 10.
Number 10 would be, what we're hoping is that that could be converted immediately. Number.
No, no, no.
Number 11.
Number 11, I'm sorry.
Number 11 would be at the beginning of the next term.
Okay.
So neither of these, just for the record, neither of these increase the salary of the Montgomery County Commission.
Now.
Now.
For the next, because if I'm reading, make sure I'm reading this right. Because it says on the section two, this act shall become effective immediately and following this passage and approved by the governor.
Yeah, I think they're going to have to do, I think that somebody, it seemed to me, just through that, in their standard language, it's going to have to be removed. It's in both of the statutes if you look and see.
Okay.
Well, they explained that to us yesterday. At the beginning of section one, it says effective beginning the next term of office.
Okay.
So that's the language that applies. Section two is just boilerplate language for legislation. Once the governor signs it, it becomes effective immediately.
Okay.
But the, the actual monies would not change until the next term of office. And then, yeah, with regard to number 10, we are hopeful that they could convert that immediate, effective immediately. But we don't, we're not 100% that our legislative delegation was going to, going to confirm that for us.
Okay.
Mr. Vice, before we move on, Dr. Stewart has sent us a letter for the annual Dr. King's Day celebration. You know, before COVID, it was done at the Davis Theater. Last year, I believe it was televised. I don't think we lost any of the quality in terms of, you know, having it televised. She wants to know if we could support that at the last year's level.
What was last year's level?
I believe it was $5,000.
I haven't spoken with her, so I don't know what that number was. But I, I'd agree that we should support her at that same level. I don't know what it was, but is there money in the joint designated?
Where do we have 5,000?
We've got, in the joint designated, we got $12,887.
You can come from there. Is that something we can do today, Mr. Vice?
Yeah, I don't have an issue with it. If, is 5,000 the number that?
Can we check that? Can Florence check it and see?
Teresa? We'll check in between sessions and we will update this. And you want to appropriate from joint designated revenue. And that would be to the, we'll, we'll get the correct organization.
Okay.
All right. I think that's all the items to be considered in the formal session. So first, we'll hear from George Speak.
3,000.
Okay.
So I'm fine with 3,000 for everybody else.
Good morning. These items, one, two, three, and four, that's our MPO projects that we're hoping to let for bid in 2023. And each, each one's a resolution. And once we get, if y'all approve the resolution, we'll be able to move forward with the plan preparation and getting everything approved through the state, so. Item number one is resurfacing Wallahatchee Road from Pike Road to Alabama 110. That's 4.6 miles.
Yeah, that's the cut through now, you know, and that's, that's what's really causing so much. We, we just, we did Wallahatchee, how long ago it's been?
It's been, I'm thinking maybe, I'm thinking eight or 10 years ago now.
It's been that long?
I believe, yes. It's in pretty bad, it's pretty rough shape.
Yeah, and got all the neighborhoods being built there too.
Yeah, that's right. A lot of development along with it. But y'all, we're asking that for next agenda.
Any discussion?
Yeah, all of these projects that, that we have here, the road projects, each of them has the MPO map. Yeah, all, all of these, uh, projects that, uh, that we have here, the road projects, each of them has the MPO match.
Yes, sir. It's, uh, eighty, it's eighty percent federal funds and twenty percent match. And, and we, we budget the match in our budget each year when we do our budget.
Does that come from the gas tax?
Gas tax, mm-hmm. One One Seven Gas Tax Fund.
But these, these are the federal, the MPO monies are the federal dollars that we get by counting all of the citizens, uh, in the city and the county to qualify for whatever, six million dollars a year is that, but...
Yes, sir, that's, that's correct.
Okay. Next agenda. Next agenda.
Okay, uh, all right, item number two is resurfacing Hobby Road from, uh, Hillaby Road, well, Spray Junction, Hillaby Road.
Yeah, we just, yeah, we found, next agenda on all four.
You wanna omnibus them, omnibus all of these, or you wanna go?
No, we're just gonna next.
We're just gonna move to the next agenda.
Oh, next agenda, next agenda, okay. All right, number three is, um, Old Carney.
Hey, George, we're telling you, you don't have to go over all of them.
Okay, yeah, okay, I thank you then.
You can move on to item number five.
All right, let's see, uh, item five, we opened bids on our crushed stone, had two bidders, and, uh, the same agency got it, Stevens, uh, Construction and Concrete. And they, they have, they have our existing contract, but it expires in January, and this one will go in, the new contract we want to award will go into effect January twenty-two. And it's a one-year with option to renew, two years, but they've done a good job, and I'm, I'm glad they, glad they got it.
George, is nobody in Montgomery County that does this type of work?
Uh, there is, but let's see, I...
They just won't bid?
Uh, that's the only, I don't know why they, uh...
Man, I have the capacity to do it, so.
Uh, th- this particular company's in LaBarn, but I don't know where they get their stone, uh...
And the other one's in Birmingham, so.
Right, that's Vulcan Materials, um, and I know, I know there's a... There's a quarry up in, uh, Talaposa County. They never do bid, but, um, but again, I don't know where, I don't know where, uh, this company gets their stone from, but, but they, you know, they've been real responsive. We hadn't had any problem with them.
And next agenda.
And that's, uh, that's about all we got.
Thanks, George.
Next, we'll hear from Darryl Parker, the Director of Elections.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, the item we have are the changes to the six precincts that we submitted. And my understanding is that, that, that should be changed to five. One of them, we won't be changing. And so we wanted to...
The one that we're not changing is, uh, there was a proposal to change from Georgia Washington High School to Antioch. Uh, there was a little bit of confusion there. Uh, Georgia Washington, the superintendent values having an election inside his school for the educational purposes, so he's asked to keep it, which is odd. Most times, schools don't want them. But he's asked us to remain in Georgia Washington. They have us in the gymnasium now. Plenty of room, it's organized, and, uh, so... At the request of Georgia Washington and Superintendent Chuck Ledbetter, he asked us that we remain there for that one, so.
But thank you to Antioch for, they always, that church there always steps up in that neighborhood to help out.
Always, very helpful, very supportive.
So what?
Which number is that?
Uh, that would be the number...
Uh...
Have to look it up.
Number ten?
Number ten.
Ten.
Yeah, so ten would not be, we would not consider that one for next meeting.
What, what, what prompted the, uh, consideration to change this many polling places? Did we take into consideration the, the, uh, impending reapportioning, uh?
Oh, well, the schools, this, this body had already ordered us out of the schools a long time ago. It was an issue.
We had to get out of these?
There was, when there was an MPS school, there was always some conflicts there. MPS really didn't want us in there at the time. And we kept having to move from the gym to the lunchroom, and it was just, it was a burden on the school. Uh, but Georgia Washington now is a Pike Road school.
That's good for that one, but the other?
Mine that's moving is moving away from a fire station. It was an open-air fire station, not, and, and my understanding is the city and the fire department preferred that we not be there. It's not an ideal location.
Then Arrowhead Country Club was another one that's moving, and the issue there was the country club has, has continued to have elections, even though they don't want to have elections, and, uh, but Darryl and his staff has found us a, a good location.
Yes, sir.
And right down the road from it.
Right up the road, Techna Center.
Techna Center, so it's very accessible.
AUM.
Snowdon Women's Club was a polling place, uh, and, uh, you know, we had the election, this past election in Snowdon Women's Club. We had to help them get the building back up to code and turn electricity on. The volunteer fire department in Snowdon has agreed to do it.
Yes, sir.
Uh, much more parking, bathrooms, better facilities.
Much larger facility, larger area, and vastly more parking.
Yes.
Uh, so that won't be an issue at that location. The other two locations in District Two, uh, Macedonia Church just felt that there were too many elections. They had signed on four years ago, I'm sorry, three years ago, they thought it would be a couple of elections, maybe three or four. We had, uh, some seven, eight elections, uh, in about a year and a half span.
Any, any conversation on just combining these places? I mean, one of the problems is, you know, you, you, city, you have city precincts and you have county precincts. Any conversation between you, uh, you and the, and the city reps on trying to combine these things? So, so that everybody will know where they're going every, every, uh, voting day? I mean, that, in, in my community, there's, there's, there's one church up the street and there's one church down the street.
Yes, sir.
They don't know which church to go to vote to on, depending on what election they're going.
Some years ago, Commissioner Harris, the city aligned themselves with the county. They deviated from that recently, in the last seven, eight years, and decided to do their own precincts and align them how they felt. Now, with the realignment coming, uh, they did contact us. Actually, this morning, they contacted Judge's office and, and myself about what precincts that we not want to have elections in. We mentioned schools and fire, the fire stations. Uh, so they're gonna address that. After we get the realignment information back to us, we'll submit that to the city as well to see if they want to try to align even closer to us.
I think every, every effort should be made to, one polling place in a community to hold all the elections.
Mm-hmm.
You know, uh, we, we, we had a big misunderstanding. Uh, Word of Life, the preacher, he just knew that the election was gonna be at his church.
Right.
And it was down the street at City of Refuge.
If you remember, Commissioner, in that, in those two situations, the city council people wanted to keep certain locations, which weren't in alignment with the county.
Right.
And so we were helpless to, and we talked to them and tried to get them to...
They wanted to keep Word of Life.
Well, we'll see. I, I'll talk to the city councilman again, because again, realignment is an issue now.
Okay.
And so once we get that information, uh, he may be open to letting us not be at Word of Life.
Right. I know there were so many at once. I was just wondering what problem.
Yeah, that's, each one's kind of a unique situation too, so it's just kind of...
If there are no other questions, we'll leave that.
Next agenda for me.
Next agenda.
Thank you.
So items six, seven, eight, nine, and eleven, we'll go to the next agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Next, we'll hear from Chief Probation Officer Ray Williams regarding a memorandum of understanding for a court referee.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, this is regards to the MOU for our, uh, full-time referee, uh, Ms. Laura Clemmons. Uh, she's there full-time with us. Uh, she hears delinquency dependency cases, and, uh, she's, uh, housed at the juvenile court with us. Do you have any questions for me?
Florence, are we on that salary one hundred percent?
We pay the salary but not the benefits. We used to pay for a part-time referee, a, a certain dollar amount. And last January, February, the courts came to us and wanted to, to move to a full-time referee. And AOC agreed to cover the benefits portion. So this is a slight increase over what we've paid every year for the past however many years this MOU has been in place.
So we're paying salary and they're paying benefits?
Correct.
So, uh, good morning, Commissioners. This is, uh, an agreement between the, the state AOC and the county whereby the commission, the county pays the salary, the fifty-three thousand starting. And then the state AOC pays for the benefit package, uh, which will include the total salary combined. Salary fifty-three thousand plus about twenty-some thousand in benefits. And the full-time referee is classified as a state employee full-time.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you all. Any further questions?
Next agenda.
Next, we'll hear from Senior IT Manager Rodney Smith. Items sixteen and seventeen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey, I'm coming before you to, uh, ask about hiring a very important person for our department. And looking at the job market, it's been very hard to find good qualified people. And we were lucky and fortunate enough to find this informa-, um, this particular individual. So I'm asking to hire at more of a competitive salary rate what he's already making. And I feel like with his background, his qualifications, he's got certified professional, um, with Cisco Networking, which is everything that we do here. And we brought him in several different times, and we went through the paces with him. He's very knowledgeable. Um, I think he will add a lot of experience to our department.
From that, your confidence in your, in, in, in your judgment, and the only thing was missing was there were no, no dollar amounts in here anywhere.
Uh, yeah, it's a...
It's just, you know...
It's a pay grade A eleven.
Wh- wh- what are you talking about, bringing him in at?
Is that, I think it's pay grade A eleven sub-six, it's like eighty-two thousand.
Is that in your budget, Rodney?
Already?
Yes, and everything I'm asking for today is within my budget.
Budget level, everything.
Yeah, um, you know, in addition to this, the, the other item I have as well is trying to create more competition within the department. You know, it, it's a tough job market out there, and I like to work to people that work really hard, diligent, is to try to open up promotional opportunities within the department to reward that effort, because, you know, I need more people running than I do walking, because we're a very small department. We have nine technical positions. And it requires a lot of everyone. And, and, and they do a lot of good jobs, but also, I'm trying to realign my department to a point that I can tackle all the needs for all the different departments and, and have a better help base and better service level. Now, I think we've always met those objectives, but I want to do it better than what we have been doing. And, you know, as a department head, that's very important to, I think, to make sure we're serving all the county departments to the best of our ability with what we have.
I typically don't support the idea of, of bringing, uh, public sector jobs in salary alignment with private sector jobs. Uh, but in this case, it's an exception, and it is a, a difficult job market, and we've got to have the best of the best as we learn the hard way. Uh, it's a good opportunity, also I support what you're wanting to do. Uh, it's also a good time to, to remind all of our leaders, our, our, our countywide elected officials, our department heads, how critical it is right now, because we don't have a jobs problem, we've got a labor problem. And we've got some phenomenal employees in Montgomery County. And what, what we need to make sure we're all doing a good job of is, you know, we, 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 we do try to increase salaries from time to time, but in a survey of the top three things that matter most to the American worker, uh, your employees want to feel, uh, part of the team. They want to be in on what's going on. They want you to communicate with them as department heads and leaders. They want you to talk to them. They don't want to read something on social media or hear something from somebody else and think, well, nobody ever tells me nothing. That, that can devastate the morale of employees, but they also want that, pats on the back. Uh, our, our, our human spirit really needs those, those public praises. So tell your people how much you value them and what a good job they're doing, and how much you appreciate them. And tell them that in front of your entire department. If somebody goes above and beyond, make sure to, to take the time to, to give them that public praise. Uh, little things, it's amazing how much, I mean, you can, you can sit out, uh, a bowl of peppermints on the reception desk in your department, and it will make people feel like you care about them. Something that small is impactful, and we all need to focus on that right now, so we can maintain. We want to recruit new people, but we also want to retain the great employees that we have.
Definitely.
Any other discussion? Next agenda.
I, I...
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I, uh, want to, want to commend your efforts, Rodney, in, in creating a situation where we can retain, uh, good employees, because that area is, is an area that is really, really competitive. So you're gonna have to be competitive when you're paying them, and you're gonna have to have something for them to do, as Commissioner Walker has stated. You're gonna have to have that type of environment in order to retain and keep them, so you ought to be commended on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Rod.
So both those items will go to the next agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Item number thirteen is a bid award to Drug Testing Program Management for Drug Lab Services for Community Corrections.
Is that a change, uh, Bill? Say one.
Next agenda.
Next agenda.
Item number fourteen, to recognize and deny a claim regarding Willie McLean.
Any discussion? Next agenda.
Item fifteen, to consider to recognize and deny a claim regarding Robin Baldwin.
Any discussion on those? Next agenda.
Item number nineteen is to consider a contract with Crosby Drinkard Group for 2022 Governmental Affairs, Representation, and Consulting Services. There's no increase in fees.
Is that an increase?
No increase. Next agenda.
I believe that.
Florence, on number eighteen, uh, we discussed that earlier, uh, the precincts, but we need to remove five-ten out of that for the next...
Right, that's a, a sort of a summary of, of the resolutions that Darryl presented.
Any Commissioners have anything they want to discuss? If not, we will, I guess recess till ten-thirty, right?
Is there anything we can do between now and ten-thirty? Anything else we need to go over?
Um, Kendall can discuss the rental assistance update.
Yeah, that'd be good. Thank you.
Good morning. Um, as of today, and probably, probably as of last week, we have expended all funds for our emergency rental assistance program, ERA One. So we have, um, assisted one thousand twenty-five tenants. Um, all the funds have been expended. And so at this point, we, in order, we, we have a lot of applications stuck in the pipeline, because we're not into ERA Two. Um, so if we approve that contract, we'll move right along. because we're not into ERA two. Um, so if we approve that contract, we'll move right along and start funding those applications that are in the pipeline. Um, also the state of Alabama has also, um... They have, because ERA one came to us as a, you know, as a large city, people who are in Montgomery County were not eligible to apply to the state and the state of Alabama has also closed their, uh, website for applications as well. So, um, that's where we are currently.
There's no money available?
Not right now. Not right now. So they've cut off app... Go ahead.
They're expecting any, any, I thought it was some money coming.
Well, ERA two will start, but right now I think the state is trying to finish up their ERA funds and, you know, get, get those funds out to their people and once they start ERA two, just like us, they'll go through the process of got application in the system, we'll get it out. Uh, the state may still take, be to start back taking applications.
Florence, do we want to talk about the Christmas luncheon, the employee luncheon? That might be a good time to kind of discuss that. Can you kind of give us a update on where we are with that?
Right, um, as you know, First Baptist Church is not able to open their doors to us as a location we've used as far as I know since we started this. And, uh, it was suggested that we look at the multiplex because it is temporarily a, a county building. The multiplex has an exclusive agreement with a catering group out of Hoover, Alabama for all, all of its functions. Uh, we finally got a, a price from them yesterday. Um, on what it, what it would cost, there's still some issues about bid law and is that acceptable as a sole source? We could not use the contract that we have bid for that. Uh, we had discussed the possibility of changing the format somewhat, letting each department come pick up a box lunch, take it back to the department. Department heads would present the certificates of award, um, for years of service. Commissioners could be present at the, at the pickup location, could go visit the departments and, uh, in conversation with Vice Chairman Singleton and some others. That was maybe a better alternative this year than trying to, to get through the details of the bid law and the added expense of, of what we'd be looking at.
We're talking about next Thursday, the sixteenth, right?
Correct.
Any thoughts?
Sounds good to me.
And ideally, we want to do it in person and it would be great, but you, you factor in the unfortunate at First Baptist Church and, and maybe this year we just have to go back to doing it similar to what we did last year, I guess.
Last year we actually did gift cards.
Yeah, we can't do that again, so. That worked out well, but we can't do that. So maybe the suggestion would be to, I don't know, Kendall, y'all had talked about a location, um, to do it?
We, we thought that a, a good pickup point would be our new county commons in Annex One. We haven't quite finished with furnishings for that, but it's where the old cafeteria was. It's gonna be a great meeting room, uh, event room, something we've, we've never, never had, centrally located. So it would sort of, it could be our debut of that empty room.
We have department heads in here. Can y'all, y'all, what's your thoughts on that? Just, is that okay? Is that appropriate? Will your employees appreciate that or, or is that, any thoughts? Everybody nodding their head? Any discussion among the Commission? Mr. Gallion?
On those boxes, are you sending out bids on them?
We already have a contract.
That's on the chapits?
For, it's been bid for...
Oh, okay. But on the other, on the contract with the facility and not with us?
Correct. It was, it was a, a contract that the city, city put out an RFP a couple of years ago for exclusive, uh, pro- exclusive provider of food, refreshments, et cetera, for the multiplex and Crampton Bowl.
Oh, okay, so it's the city, not...
Right, we, right, we have, we're, we're, we're not a party to that at all.
You know, I just want to make sure that Xander was jumped several years ago for serving coffee and donuts or something in here.
Yeah.
Commissioner, I want to make sure we got it.
That's nice.
Well, that's good.
I think maybe this year that's the best course and then look forward to next year being able to... First Baptist should be ready and we can all join again because I think there's a lot of value in, in all of us being there together, so.
Yeah.
Um, the next thing I wanted to ask about, uh, I'll bring it up, the Christmas parade, the city Christmas parade, it's, I think that's just Friday.
Correct.
I know Dan wants to ride in that golf cart that's broke down on me the last two times. I've had it. Broke down at William Boyd Parade and then broke down at the Turkey Day Parade, so.
I warned him, I warned him, I told him.
I need the Commissioner Harris with me so he can push it back up this hill.
That's what he wanted.
Yeah.
The, the, the last I heard on the condition of the golf cart, it, it was... Problems were being diagnosed at, at a real facility and there was an issue about a belt slipping. I've not gotten an updated report this morning, but it is, it's considered a high priority to make sure it's ready for action Friday.
Well, if it's not, we can, I just want to make sure we're still invited or we're a part of that like we have in the past because I haven't seen anything, I don't know if y'all have seen anything about, about, uh, about us being invited to be a part of the city parade. Have you gotten anything from them, from the city or anybody's gotten anything? Kendall? You in it? Yeah. J.C., you in it, right? J.C. got that nice float, yeah.
We'll check on that.
Yeah.
That golf cart is fickle. He, he tried to get me to drive him in it. I remember, I remember Lacy Boy, Lacy Boy Parade. We turned the corner and it quit.
And Dan jumped out and left me stranded. Somebody got anything else they wanna, before we...
I, I, I did and I, I planned to share this with you guys individually. I just got it from the Director of Cultural Affairs from the mayor's office for the City of Montgomery. Uh, they are planning to bring jazz back to the city and county in a big way, uh, beginning next year. They want to try to start, uh, next fall. They thought about Memorial Day, but they're, they're looking at, uh, next September, the, an annual Montgomery School Jazz Festival. And they're asking, and I'll, I'll share this with you. They're asking for a partnership and we usually partner sixty-fourty. They're looking at a, an ROI of something like two million dollars on this thing, but the investment is three hundred thousand, uh, to be, uh, shared, uh, with the city, county, sixty-fourty. And that could be reduced, uh, by, uh, you know, getting some, some private corporate, uh, sponsorship along with it.
I know you go to jazz always to California every year, don't you?
Yeah, I told them, they said September. I said any week except the third week because I'll be in Monterey. Uh, but, but, uh, but, but, you know, it's something that we, we're gonna consider. I, I, I'll share this.
Yeah.
This email she sent me with you.
So I asked, it'll be about a hundred and twenty thousand and just need to look at the informa- the economic impact of this and, and rely on you because you've been out there, you know what it does, so.
This, this is, I, I, you got, half of Montgomery really traveled to Panama City once a year. And I know, well, there's one person sitting out there in order to go down to Panama City. And I used to go to Birmingham for this same type of concert. And I mean, it's, it started in Destin and it outgrew Destin and went to Panama City. It's, it's almost outgrown Pier Park.
What are they talking about having it, in Old Town? They said the venue?
At the, uh, riverfront.
Riverfront, okay.
The, uh, promoters came through and they looked at the riverfront and they thought it was, it would be perfect. Uh, a perfect venue for it.
Yeah, I'm thinking about...
That one in Panama City starts on Wednesday and ends on Sunday. And, I mean, it's, I've, I've watched it grow. I, last time I was there, it were, it was just capacity, you know?
You know, Whitewater, of course Whitewater won't be here, uh, next year, but, uh, the following years it will be and that'd just be another venue, another, uh, opportunity for people to come to Montgomery, visit and...
Yeah, and, and I think that's what Montgomery has, has lacked and what Montgomery has needed. Baseball does it, uh, in terms of for, uh, for locally, for people all over the state will come to Montgomery for baseball. But I'd like to have an event, uh, more than one event. I mean, we, uh, where people come from all over the world once a year, come to Montgomery.
If you hadn't been to the Legacy Museum, you're missing something, right?
And they are doing that for that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That, if y'all haven't been to that, let me encourage you to go. I mean, I was... And again, I'm not a museum person. I'm not that culturally talented, but, uh, that museum, the Legacy Museum, I mean, that's, that's something you, you won't think you're in Montgomery, Alabama. You'll think, wow.
Even if you're not a museum person, it's so easy to get through.
It is.
You know what I mean? You don't have to, not a whole lot of work on your part, just walk in and look and read.
Being amazed.
It is, it's great. Uh, for half a million, the first year, half a million people?
I'm talking about the new one that, uh, they just opened. The, the, it's called the Legacy Museum.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the one we went through, yeah. And, uh, I mean, it's amazing. So, anybody got anything else? Will we have a recess?
Yes, I was wondering, uh, you know, we talked about, uh, trying to supplement the American Rescue Plan, uh, Act Funds, supplement, uh, the, uh, Infrastructure and Job Creation Act, uh, funds that will be coming through. I'm just wondering, I know the City of Montgomery has a very, uh, effective and charismatic grant writer. And I know normally we, you know, have joint ventures, uh, you know, when it comes to things that are gonna benefit both the city and the county. And we give any more consideration to a grant writer or maybe even partnering with the City of Montgomery?
Yeah, we've been talking about that. Where were you, Florence, with that process?
We are, are looking for, it's my understanding that the city's creating a new job description for, help me with the right category, a grant...
Administrator.
Administrator. We, we presently have a, a grant manager and a grant specialist in our, uh, pay plan. Those positions are not currently filled. What, what we have talked about in particular, what Vice Chairman Singleton had talked about was putting, creating a position for the grant administrator who would be, who could work with grant managers, be, be responsible for all, all parts of it, all...
Yeah, and you know, uh, I know Sheriff Department's a perfect example where they have invested in grant writers and that return on investment is multiplied many, many times. It pays for itself to have somebody out there actively looking. And I think we've missed out, as Commissioner Snackie said, we, we've missed out a lot of great opportunities, a lot of money out there, especially right now, that, uh, we're not aware is out there. Is that kind of what you were thinking about?
Well, I, I, I thought we were doing, I thought we were, we were deciding that we want to do that.
Yeah, we have talked about, but where are we at in the process of, of getting somebody?
We need, there's some money out there we need to go at, be, be going after right now.
The, the next step is the grant administrators' job description.
We need to start moving towards that.
And that we'll bring that to you for approval and, uh, it'll be approved by the personnel board and then we can advertise it and fill that position.
I know y'all don't have anything to do, so it'd be something good to jump on, so.
Well, there is, there is a level of compliance that comes with that. Um, and that's something we always have to be, you know, that would be, we get a grants person, we do start writing these grants, the heavier the grant gets, like our ERA, uh, process, you know, there, there may be a need to, um, add some, add a person to our financing because there is, there are reports, very thick reports. There are, you know, you have to take an entire day out to, to, to work on the compliance end. Um, just working with the FTA, working with them. For every grant, there is a compliance report that must be done quarterly. Um, and so with other grants, especially as you get into some of your big highway grants, we talk about the, uh, infra program, we talked about raise on some of the big ticket items. Um, those reports that, um, working with ALDI to make sure these invoices are coming in, everything's bid properly, um, there is a higher level of compliance, so, you know, we, we...
I think, I think when you're thinking about that, Kendall though, think about it in terms of having a grant administrator and, and making sure that that administrator has the support that they need. I wouldn't want to have somebody in finance, in addition to the duties that they're already doing, have to do that. Uh, the, the person that's gonna be doing the type of work that you're talking about should be dedicated to, because these are gonna be some large grants.
No, yes sir, that's...
And they should, they should be dedicated to that.
That's what we've talked about because right now, quite frankly, with the grants that go through, our finance director is the person who actually has to approve all that financial reporting. And, and, you know, and in addition to the financial reporting that has to be done, there are operational reports. So it's, it's, we've, we've talked to Regina about some of the things she does and, and her, her experience and what she thinks, how a department should be structured. Kendall has great experience coming from the city where he did and we've talked about some needs in the finance department in, in general. So it, it's, we're trying to get a, a, a plan in place.
I mean, it's, it's more than a grant administrator.
Right, there's no doubt.
To, to, to do it, I understand that, you know, but I, I don't want someone that's already doing a whole bunch in finance to get that thrown on their desk.
No, that, that could not...
No, 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 no.
We're looking at a person that do all the grants accounting, but other accounting in the finance. It would be a new...
A senior accounting person.
How soon do you think it might be before we can start at least, uh, getting a job description? And I know the city has a very capable grant writer and she's doing a lot of things already, uh, in terms of getting money for trails and things of that nature. And so hopefully we can meet with her at some point and...
We've had several, several conversations with her about, uh, was it with ERA? No, it, it was, uh, with, yeah, about, about the ARPA funds.
Are we gonna, do we have a timeframe that we can get this done? Because I, I, I realize compliance is an issue, but, I mean, we, that should not be a problem. We should be able to account for every dime we get, wherever it comes from.
Yes, sir. Um, we'd like to see it, we probably can work on getting a description done this January. So, just with the holidays coming up and, and, you know, expect the time to be missed. Get that in, get that worked on and get it before you, hopefully by second meeting in January.
All righty.
Anything else? Let's take a, a recess till ten-thirty and we'll start sharply at ten-thirty.